Just so we know who's on, we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves. I'm City Councilor Tracy Whitfield, Chair of Finance Committee for the City Council. And with us, we have Council President. You want to introduce yourself, Council President?
Oh, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm Jesse Letterman, the President of Springfield City Council. And appreciative, Madam Chair, of your calling the meeting.
Thank you. And then, Tim?
Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer for the city of Springfield.
And everyone in the room?
Yep, Melanie Acoby, Director of ARPA. Now let the rest of the staff introduce themselves.
Matthew Ferri, Compliance Project Manager with ARPA.
Cynthia Hackett, Deputy CACO.
And also Lee Most, Senior Budget Analyst.
What's the, I'm sorry, gentleman's name?
Matthew Tooties. Ferri F E R R I.
And how long have you been with the city?
Three months.
And then we have Counselor Tim Allen with us. He's part of the Finance Committee. Looks like you're driving, Tim. Well, that's him. You can see his head in the car.
Yes, I'm driving. I won't be watching, but I'll be listening.
Okay. And then we have William Chapman. He's the owner of Chapman House of Pain.
Hi, everybody.
And Yutrina Holly, is that the last name, Trina?
Yutrina Holly Hodges.
Hodges, that's right, your married name.
That's okay.
In spa. So Melanie, I'm going to let you start with the report. And then, are you able to share screen?
Yeah, let me see here. Can you see that?
No. Yep, see it now.
Excellent. All right, um, let me see if I can zoom a little. All right, thank you, Counselor Whitfield. And so I'd like to start off with the reports that were sent out. I apologize, they were a little delayed because I was trying to get some last minute information. I will be sending a little bit more ahead of time, so you have more time to review. So the first report on here, feel free to ask any questions as we're going over them, is the count of all of the applications that we've received. I've also added on a column to indicate which of those have been awarded. So those numbers are included in the applications received column. And so these are all the categories that have been so far announced, that have been made available for individuals or parties to apply to. The Build Better Springfield Program, the Echo Devon Job Creation Category, Exterior Repairs and Healthy Homes, which was the latest announcement the mayor made back in the May 24th announcement, I believe, Households Neighborhood Economic Relief, or sorry, Recovery Fund. We abbreviated to NERF, so if you see it somewhere, NERF, that's what it is. New Business Applications, Nonprofits, Seniors and Small Business. As you can tell in the order or as they're listed, the majority of the applications that we have received are under the seniors and households categories. And then they go under different ones, including the new business and exterior and healthy home repair program. Additionally, we have a second report on here that breaks down the budget. So these are all the categories that we just discussed and all the other categories that are not necessarily a category that was announced, such as like admin costs, for example. So here are what was budgeted versus the actual expenses, encumbrances and requisitions. And total committed basically sums the actuals and conferences and the requisitions. So I don't want to go through.
Main Street redevelopment, that was the purchase of those buildings a while back?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and, um, all right, we'll keep going.
And then the last report goes into two pages. Uh, let me see if I can unzoom a little bit here. This is basically all of those contracts that we just said that were awarded, the status of them. So it breaks it down to what? Hold on, let me see if I can. Can you see that a little bit better?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's a little large, so this is the best I can unzoom. So it breaks it down into the categories in which the application was submitted under. The name of the applicant, whether it was a business, nonprofit, or whatever, the contract status, how much did they ask for versus what was awarded, what round was the announcement made, and whether or not a first or second check was made and the dates that correspond to those. So this has been updated as of today, so I know that this report has been asked of a couple of times. So we have updated it since those other times that you have received the reports. So I just wanted to let you know that this is.
All right, um, so I'm looking, so the contracts that have not been awarded or have not been discussed are not on this report.
Correct. These are simply the ones that have been awarded and the status of the contracts.
Can you go down to the bottom number?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't have a totals column, but I can certainly add that.
Yeah, can you add that for the future, because I want to know what went out? And can you also add a column that clearly states? I think you may have sent this, but who received? Well, I guess this column will work. I just can't really see it on the screen.
All right, yeah, I can zoom it a little bit, but then it kind of breaks down the columns.
This is a little better.
Okay.
So I had been getting a lot of questions about, oh, I know what I want to add. I want to add demographics. I want to add demographics as far as, is there a column that shows what area of Springfield and also the race?
We don't have it on this, but we can definitely add it. I just didn't, uh, this is my first ARPA meeting, so we can certainly add it to the following one, absolutely.
Okay. And, um, so I'm just seeing like, so when I look at this initially, it's like, oh, good, they got a lot of money out. But when you dig deep, is to where the money is going to and the amounts that have been awarded. It's like, it's going to organizations that's already surviving and probably had access to a whole lot of other funding throughout the time of COVID. And probably, I mean, I see a couple on here that got awarded by the state and probably went through other agencies to get funding. But I'm not seeing is the folks that really need it the most, like our seniors, like some of the small businesses that may not know how to go about getting some of these other awards. I'm not seeing, I see some, I see some, but when I look at the dollar amounts, it's the large amounts that's going to like organizations that already have large amounts of money. So that bothers me a little bit. It bothers me a little bit. And I did not know that the mayor, so you all give the mayor a list and he selects which ones he wants the funds to go to, because this isn't mayor's money. This is money that came to the city because of the impacts of COVID on the black and brown community. Yet I see large sums of money going to organizations that may service these people, but I don't see a lot of the money going to the people themselves that needed themselves. So Melanie, I'm not directing this to you, I'm directing it to anyone. That is bothersome to me, because the most disproportionately impacted people are not having access to the funds. And it's been a couple of years that they haven't had access to the funds, and we got to do better. We got to better.
I understand, Counselor Whitfield. And just to address the concern with regards to the mayor. So again, part of the process is whenever applications are received, we ensure that all of the documents that are required are there in the first place. And then as soon as that's done, we move it on to an evaluation committee, which I forwarded everybody, the criteria that falls on there. So long as we have evaluations come out as a highly advantageous application, that's when it gets moved over to Advisory Board. And what they do is that they review the applications to make sure that it's in compliance and what the recommended amounts will be for funding. And so the mayor's role in it is simply to review that, give the final okay, of which all of the applications that have gone through Advisory Board have been approved by the mayor. So I just wanted to make sure that that is on the table. With regards to the concerns for households and seniors, we do have a status update that we wanted to provide, but that is a different category of funding that's not listed on this report. So I just didn't want to jump ahead if that's something that you had further questions on this report. But we do have a status update to address the needs of the residents and seniors in which we are very well aware of and sympathetic towards, and we want to make sure that we are responding to those.
Thank you. So yeah, I'll wait on that for seniors and households, because I got two small businesses that's on the call that submitted applications back in November, December. I know that William Chapman was working with, um, with the team. I don't know who specifically, but I wanted to give him an opportunity and Yutrina opportunity to talk about their experience. And I also just wanted to add that I got folks submitting applications that said they haven't heard one thing. So I get the dates, I'm going to provide you with a list of these, with the days they submitted their applications, and they have not heard anything at all. There's also applicants that submitted applications when there were different criterias that were needed, that are no longer needed, and they still have not heard anything at all. And so that in itself too is also bothersome to me. And I'm going to tell you guys, when we get closer to the end of the meeting, a suggestion that I have that maybe we can resolve some of the issues that I'm hearing every day. It's every day. But, um, I wanted to give the floor to Will Chapman and then Yutrina, just to say a couple of words. It won't be long, but just to tell about their experience. And Will, you want to go first?
Oh, yeah, I don't mind. Um, thank you. So my name is William Chapman, and I'm the owner of Chapman's House of Pain, which is located in Indian Orchard. Um, a little bit about Chapman's House of Pain is that it caters to youths as well as adults. You know, we try to provide services, mental wellness as well as physical wellness to the whole family. Um, we, we work with a wide range of, uh, of different ethnic, excuse me, ethnics, I can't talk right now.
Ethnic backgrounds, we'll just say it.
You guys hear it. But yeah, so we work in service with a wide range of people from all different walks of life, all different nationalities. And, um, uh, we were very greatly impacted by the, uh, by the pandemic. Um, several times we were forced to close and still be responsible for overhead. And this business had become a, uh, a normally lucrative business, but, um, we began to, you know, slip through the cracks during the pandemic, which caused me to, um, I had to dig in, into my own finances, my personal finances, to try to keep, you know, my dream afloat. And it was not my dream, it was, uh, you know, a lot of people, a lot of the children, a lot of the adults that were there, you know, they, they almost lived to participate in the journey we were embarking on. So when COVID hit, we were, we were greatly impacted. And, um, so, uh, the opportunity to reach out in regards to the fund came around. I filled out an application and I handed it in November 21st. You know, um, I tried to get it in, overdone in as soon as possible. And, um, I didn't, I don't think I heard a first response to, until, um, late December, or actually January, because I, I remember reaching out for a second time in December. And then I actually heard a response in January. But, um, uh, initially I was working with, I believe, Attorney, Attorney Moore and Mr. Swan. And, um, these gentlemen were able to get me in for a meeting. And I, and I think that meeting didn't happen until March, when I reached out again, um, kind of in distress, because at that point, um, my landlord was going through the eviction process and not only going through eviction process, but he was interested in selling the building. So, uh, I was, I was in a bad position, so I reached out again. And, um, and I think I also sent emails off to other people to inform them what was going on. And, um, and I did get a response back, I did get a meeting. And in the meeting, I was told what, in addition, that I needed to submit. And I submitted those things. And then there was communication, but it started to slow down again and then eventually break down totally March 3rd. It was my last communication with, uh, Mr. Swan or Attorney Moore. Um, I did receive.
Everything that they asked you to submit, the additional information that?
Uh, yeah, some things they even asked me to submit a couple of times, you know? Um, and, uh, I mean, at one point, you know, I was worried about, you know, whether I had to change the strategy of what I was asking for, because, um, they assured me that, you know, what I asked for was doable, but they weren't comfortable doing it in, um, in, in, quote, Phase One. They wanted to do it in, in phases. And, um, you know, I just felt like, um, I was at a disadvantage, because one, uh, the paperwork involved wasn't as comprehensive, as, as comprehensive as I would have liked. But, um, we got through it. But I also felt disheartened, because I saw, um, as a counselor said, councilwoman said, that I saw businesses who weren't really hurting during the pandemic, receiving, um, significant funding. And I was practically begging for any type of help, I was begging for responses. You know, so it was kind of disheartening, kind of frustrating, you know, but.
And he reached out to me, not to interrupt you, Will, but he reached out to me a few times. I resent the email, I got responses back, that's probably the time that he would be communicated with. And then the communication stopped. And although there's a communication breakdown or changes in roles and responsibilities in the finance department at the city, that the communication shouldn't have stopped. That could have been communicated. We are pausing, um, because we have some staff changes happening. And it should be a timeframe that folks could, folks will understand, because you got to understand their services had to stop completely. Some of the organizations like Big Y, who got a million dollar services, did not stop completely, because people still have to eat. Will's service had to stop completely, because he worked with children and families in martial arts, health and wellness, mental wellness, and we couldn't, we couldn't go into these locations anymore. We couldn't, we had to stay in. And so, but Big Y, uh, we were still going, we still had to shop and get food, but yet they got a million dollars. And so these are the things that's like really disturbing to me, because during the pandemic, Big Y didn't suffer, but they're getting money to open another location. I mean, I'm pretty sure we all suffered, because they suffered food shortages and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, they still had folks going to buy food. Um, so I'm just not understanding the disconnect with folks that's disproportionately impacted, that really need this money, as opposed to folks that, or organizations that still, um, are running. I, I, I'm not understanding this. And I'm also not understanding how all of these organizations can get this funding and not one household and not one senior in two years received a dollar, nothing. They should have been at the top of the list, they should have been the priority. Like, some of us had to stop working, and I'm saying us, because for a while I did. And I picked up part-time jobs and I did what I had to do to keep my income where it needed to be, but I had to stop working. So I know there's a lot more people like me that also struggled. I'm just, I don't want to monopolize this. I do want to give my colleagues the opportunity to speak before we move on to Ms. Yutrina, and then we'll move back to the finance in the, in the committee and hear from you guys. So Tim or, um, Counselor, I mean, Counselor Letterman, do you have anything?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do have some questions for the finance team, but I think they might also be addressed by, by some of the answers that might come relative to Yutrina's testimony or relative to questions you may have as well. So I'm happy to wait, or I can ask them now, whatever you'd prefer.
Well, let's hear Yutrina, if Tim doesn't have anything, based on what we're saying right now. Based on what we're discussing right now, and then we'll, um, circle back.
Hi, um, thank you so much for this opportunity. Tracy, I really appreciate this. My name is Yutrina Holly Hodges, and I'm a lifelong resident of Springfield. Um, I have been a business owner, um, since 2004. I, um, I did step away for briefly to go to school to get my associate's degree. But I had three hair salons in the city for 15 years, three locations. I had 17 hairstylists. So I've always utilized my business for my community. I've done tons of fundraisers, different community, just awareness, involvement. You know, MCDI students, always very active in the community with my business. And recently, I had the desire, you know, after going back to school, that I wanted to go back into business. And, um, I leased a place at 876 Sumner Avenue here in Springfield. And up until now, so it's been 15 months. And up until now, I've paid $25,500 in rent to the space that I can't get in. And also a total of like $75,000 total in furnishings and, um, and just all the different things that, you know, materials, building materials, because the place, you know, needed work and stuff like that. I also had to move my business into my home, because I could no longer, you know, afford the booth rent that I was paying at another hair salon, along with paying the rent at my, um, at the split place that I'm leasing. And so I've just run into a bunch of different complications. Um, I sought out a plumber on behalf of the landlord who doesn't live here in Springfield. And, um, this gentleman was going to charge me an astronomical price for the work that, um, that, that he was going to do. And he held my business up for six months. Um, I'm not sure, I haven't gotten to the root of where this long problem has come from, because the building department has been giving me so much runaround. I mean, they failed my, the bathroom for being one inch off. Um, it's just, I had my, have like maybe five different holes in the floor for them having to move the toilet in the sink and having to move the walls every time, like just prolonging the process of me getting into my space, where I plan on employing seven individuals, you know, along with myself. And so I'm just at such a disadvantage. But with the ARPA grant, um, I applied back in February. I applied for my home and I applied for my business as well. So of course, with all these financial restraints, I haven't been able to work on my home. Like my stairs that my clients have to come in are like in disrepair. You know, I, you know, I just, I'm just at such a disadvantage. And I'm just wondering why my application was not considered waived since February. And like I said, you know, like you guys were saying, there's so much money that have went to organizations like, you know, Forest Park Zoo and even businesses that are not even in business yet. Startup businesses have received money, um, all these types of things. And I don't think I put an actual dollar amount of what I need, but I'm, I'm just in need, you know what I mean? And, um, I'm just looking for the best way that I can get some help. I don't know what this whole thing is, but I've heard other stories along with other business owners and homeowners, as far as their frustrations with the building department, the inspectors, the plumbing inspector, the building inspector. I have no idea, you know, what's going on behind the scenes there.
Another meeting that we'll probably have to have, but I know Counselor Letterman is working on speaking to the building department on your behalf, because he did call him, had a conversation, because I didn't quite get that part. I was just thinking about the funding that you.
Yeah.
deserve to help.
A long time ago.
Yeah, so he, well, that's another subcommittee meeting, but I know Counselor Letterman is working on that piece. Um, but I really just brought them in, because I get testimonies like this, if not two or three times a week, every day. But since people know that I am really adamant and passionate about the folks that really deserve to get this money, getting it, they come to me a lot, they come to Counselor Hurst a lot. I know they come to Counselor Letterman, because those are the ones that I talk to about it. I'm not sure about the other counselors, but these are the ones that I talk about it. And it's very frustrating, because there's nothing I can do, because at the end of the day, we don't make the decisions, you all do, and ultimately the mayor. And so I want to know, what's the disconnect here? Why, Yutrina, have you, were you reached out by, to anyone, by anyone in the?
Not until I had emailed you and then you CC'd me with another woman.
Melanie.
Her name started with an M, Melanie?
Yes, in the red.
But I, I still haven't heard anything back from her. And it's probably been about three, three to four weeks, you know, since that. So, and I still haven't heard anything. And I even have some clients, you know, that, you know, are talking about it and still don't know about it. People are not even aware, you know what I mean? So, but, yeah.
All right, counselors? I'm going to give you the opportunity now, Counselor Letterman.
Sure, thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Madam Chair. And thank you to both residents for, for being able to put a face to the, to the story and to the applicant. I think that's really helpful. And I'm hopeful that the department will be able to assist you. And Yutrina, I did actually, I finally heard back from the building department this morning. So I'm, I'm working on figuring that out on your behalf as well, and we'll reach out to you. It was great meeting you the other day. The couple of questions that I have are relative to some of the conversations that have been had previously and just the status on where things are. So I'm hoping somebody might be able to first shine some light on where you are in terms of scaling the department up and the hires that you had hoped to make relative to, you know, analysts to provide technical assistance and just in general, allow you to review applications at a larger clip. So are you still hiring, or do you have open positions, or are those all filled?
So with regards to our staffing, so we finally, we've been having a lot of struggles with, uh, obviously staffing fully for us to understand what the overall markets were going to be. So right now, we do have, for the most part, fully staffed. We do have a vacancy right now in a position for compliance, which is going to be hopefully filled soon with another FTE for us to provide compliance for awards on ARPA. So that should fill all the positions in which we currently have available for the ARPA department as things develop, meaning new programs being created or intake may be higher than anticipated. Then at that point, we will review if there is a need for another position to facilitate with those needs. Does that answer your question?
It does. And so with regard to that, at your current staffing level, what level of technical assistance are you able to provide?
Yes.
To potential applicants?
That's a great question, Counselor Letterman. So a part of the, of what I'm hearing, and thank you for sharing, Mr. Chapman and Mrs. Holly Hodges with your stories, and I'll address those after. But with regards to technical assistance, at the beginning of the, prior to me being in this position, at the beginning of the funds being awarded and us providing, you know, compliance measures to individuals and also providing funding to them, we didn't have a full compliance team. And at this point, we do. So right now, what we have are two positions in which what they do is whenever we have applications that are received, we do the intake on those. And so there's a preliminary compliance that's done on those with regards to figuring out whether all of the forms are there and emailing the applicants as to whether anything is missing. And so since my position, since me being in this position in May, what we're trying to do now is because we have over 1,000 applications and two staff members, we're trying to divvy up the work in the order the applications have been received to send out notifications to those businesses as to what is missing. And so is it perfect? No, because obviously we have two staff members doing the work, but we are trying the best that we can with the capacity that we have. And so with regards to awards, however, whenever applicants are received funding, at that point, we have other compliance directors or managers that assist, which Matt is one of them, as well as Che, who you've mentioned have received conversations with. And so those compliance measures are more specific to the final rules that ARPA regulations have, making sure that not only are the contracts in compliance, but the spending is in aligned, aligned with what the ARPA rules are and what the goals of the city is. So at this time, we have two and two in each field, and hopefully we'll be adding that third team member that I just mentioned, who will also be on the after, the post award compliance.
Thank you. But what about technical assistance for people in the beginning stages? I mean, some of the calls that we're getting from folks, especially seniors or business owners that might not have had the opportunity or necessity to engage with this level of, you know, technical application previously, you know, what about for folks that are at the beginning? What, what level of technical assistance do we have for that in terms of regular workshops that are, you know, culturally competent, language accessible? Things, things that we've talked about in previous meetings?
Yeah, so those two compliance managers that I advise of on the pre-award stage also provide the technical assistance. So the way that we're doing it right now is if anybody has any questions regarding their status, we recommend them to contact the ARPA at Springfield City Hall email, which is also included on the website. We respond within one to two business days to any questions that they may have. And if there are any things that are missing in the application, we make sure to include that. If there is a call that's necessitated to go over a little bit more of the details of the application, we're more than happy to do so. Unfortunately though, because you saw on this desk, we have over 1,000 applications and two staff members that are not just doing technical assistance, are also doing intake. So we are more than happy to provide the technical assistance, because that is something that we are cognizant of. A lot of individuals in the community are not used to doing applications like this or are not aware of exactly the forms that we're asking for. And we are aware of that and want to make sure that we're helping them out as best as possible. With regards to outreach, we are planning on doing outreach events. Right now, we're in the process of analyzing and reviewing household and senior applications. We haven't reached out, doing outreach on those yet, because we want to finalize that process first before doing outreach. But the outreach will include with city council and neighborhood councils to go over the overall application process for all of the categories and any questions that may be coming up as a result of those. So unfortunately, I haven't had the time yet. I just started in May, but that is definitely on the radar and is on the agenda. We've already started reaching out to neighborhood councils and individual city counselors with questions and emails as well. So right now, the technical assistance again is through those two staff members that we have.
Where, where's Che's department on that then? Because wasn't his department the ones that were also offering technical assistance?
Yep, so I think there's a little confusion in the technical assistance. So we provide technical assistance for pre-award and post-award. So Che is part of the post-award.
He's part of the post-award?
Right, so when somebody is awarded, if they need technical assistance with perhaps their budget questions, compliance with the forms in which they're submitting, those are the compliance measures that we handle post-award. Pre-award are those that you're just mentioning, questions on your application, how to fill it out, what are the forms that are required to be submitted? Those type of questions are handled in the pre-award.
Well, that totally was not explained, all the meetings that we've had since we've received this money that he's supposed to award, because we've been sending folks to him for help with, you know, the application process as well. And does he automatically forward them over to you guys?
Yes, everything that, everybody, so just to caveat this too, we've also just recently been staffed, so a lot of the stuff had to be divvied out amongst one or two separate people. Now that we have full staffing, we can put people to pre and post-award. So anytime that he does receive anything that has nothing specifically with his role, will be forwarded over to us to handle and take care of.
Sorry to interrupt, Counselor Letterman, but if you just indulge me one quick second, because I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So all this time, there hasn't been great staffing. Have you guys ever considered getting consultants to, like, this is something that I'm gonna ask for, but have you considered getting consultants to help with, it's 79 applications out of 1,500 in, in a couple of years that we've had this application process going is really, it's like 4%, almost 5%, that, that's a small, small number.
Yes. So the goal for the city is if we can to do outsourcing of a consultant or a business or nonprofit that can assist us with the technical assistance that we cannot dedicate enough time or resources to, because we just don't have the stack we're keeping so. So what I mean by that, we've seen a lot of applications where businesses may not know what like a profit and loss statement is or a balance sheet is, which are requirements of the application. So we want to make sure that not only are we telling them to give us the information that we need for applications, but assisting them for their business to succeed in the future, to provide them resources and understanding what are the different things that are available if it's not through ARPA, through other city organizations? And what are the resources that we can give to you now? So those are dedicated outsourcing consultants and nonprofits.
Who are those consultants? Who are some of those consultants?
No, we don't have them yet. Those are, that's what we're trying to figure out right now, because that's what we want to do, to be able to get the answers to a lot of the questions that the businesses have that we unfortunately don't have the manpower to provide.
Okay, Counselor Letterman, I'm sorry, I did jump in and steal your show.
Oh, no problem, Counselor Madam Chair. We're on the same page. And I think, you know, relative to, relative to the contracting, you know, I, I agree 100%. And I know we've discussed it in previous meetings. I mean, there are established and trusted community organizations that the city has partnered with in the past. You know, everything from designated anti-poverty organizations to newer economic development-based groups that, that have, you know, been building energy in the city. I mean, I think we should be providing grant funds to those organizations, because people know and trust them and, and would be able, I'm sorry if I cut off for a second. Would people know and trust those organizations and would feel comfortable going in and sitting down and receiving that, that basic assistance? Not just the small businesses, but also the residents and seniors. The other thing is, I think that we should, we should be working with Greater Springfield Senior Services and doing technical assistance on a regular basis out of the senior center. I know there had been a couple of events put on there, but I, I think that, you know, we should put some more resources towards just basically walk-in hours where, where seniors could go in and have that opportunity. So I'll just throw a couple of more quick things out for, for the team to take back, because I don't want to monopolize the time either. But something that I've, one last question, which is, what is your projected timeline to clear your backlog now that you're staffed up?
Yep, so just before I answer that, just to quickly answer Counselor Letterman, your, your suggestion about the senior centers, we're actually already working with them right now to do outreach events for the household and senior application. So I'd be happy to go over that in further detail, but we are working with them already. We just had a meeting with them. So just, we will keep you in the loop as soon as those are scheduled. So with regards to
Sorry, while you're talking about the outreach meeting, is that to also help folks that already put in applications? Because we need to get the backlog done before we start accepting new applications. I think there, it'd be wise to put a pause on new applications until the backlog is taken care of.
Correct. And let me just address a little further, because I think it'll answer all of your questions. So the senior center outreach that we're looking to do is to both address all of the applications that we have received and also to address all of those that wants to submit applications. So we will be providing them with physical drop-off locations as well as online-based ways of submitting the application, so they have options for them to submit. We will be the ones providing the printouts to the organizations that we work with, including the senior centers. And we will also be providing outreach events with the senior centers where we are not only training them, but we will also be there on certain events where we're showing and helping the residents to apply and provide information that they need. And a lot of the complaints, or not complaints, but a lot of the suggestions we've heard is a lot of people don't have access to a computer, or they don't have access to a scanner to provide the documents that we're asking for. So these centers have those resources available. So that's why we want to make sure that we're not only training the staff, but providing the outreach to all of the individuals. So that's what we're working currently with them. So we're in the process, we're coordinating that right now. So that's why I don't have dates for you, because we're literally coming up with dates and timeframes for us to do that. But as soon as I come up with, we finalize those plans, I'd be happy to share those with you. We are working together with both Sandy and Helen on it, so everybody's kind of on the same page with what we're doing. And then, does that answer the question with the senior and houses before I move on to your question, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, so now you were gonna say relative to your timeline on clearing the backlog?
Yep, so ideally, right now, we've already gone through a large list of the small business, new business and nonprofit applications. So what we're doing is going in the order of receipt. And then from there, once we go over the order receipt, reviewing the actual applications, any missing documents that are on there, get emails to the email that was provided to us with the information that was requested. A lot of times, individuals, you know, they've been calling or emailing with follow-up questions. Sometimes we don't get responses back, so we're trying to stay on top of those to ensure that we have the correct contact information. But because it is a large volume and we only have two, we're going in the order in which we receive. And so the timeline, I'm hoping within the next month or two, will have at least reached out to all of the applications with some kind of answer as to whether, okay, yours is complete, it's ready to be evaluated, or it's not complete. These are the documents that are missing. And so we're over halfway there as it is. But again, it's not a perfect system, because we're putting in the applications that we're asking, whatever email we get. And sometimes the email can be missing a letter, or it's spread, or the person doesn't use this email anymore. So we have to make sure that we're following up on those if we don't get it. So it does take a little time. It's not perfect, like I mentioned, but we are definitely over halfway through the list.
Here are my final thoughts, because again, I don't want to monopolize the time and I appreciate your being here to answer our questions. So just for you to take back in some of this, again, you know, we said on previous meetings, but Melanie, I know you're new in, in this role or relatively new, so I want you to know. So first, for everybody, I am getting calls from residents who are being told by 311 to call their city counselor for updates on their ARPA application. I am very accessible. My cell phone number is plastered all over the city and any resident is welcome to call me directly anytime. However, the 311 call center needs to be directed to ensure that residents with ARPA-specific questions are also provided the contact information that you mentioned earlier. So that, that's number one that needs to be taken back. Number two, when you do move into accepting further applications, I think that advertising needs to be looked at. I know that, you know, there were a lot of commercials run on some, you know, major networks, that's great. But, you know, folks in, in my age demographic across the spectrum do not consume live television. So we are missing out on a very large swath of the population who is in need of assistance. So I'm hoping we can see social media be engaged in a more meaningful way, you know, so that we're not missing those folks. And then finally, I would say, I have heard from some folks who have been awarded, but who are, are in the sort of pre-award category and are still waiting to actually, they've been told they will be funded, but they have still not been funded. And so that timeline seems to be lengthy. I don't know what, what we can do to reduce that turnaround in addition to reducing the turnaround on initial review. But, you know, folks are, folks are waiting who have been approved, including small businesses. And so that, that's kind of where I'm at right now. But again, thank you for being here to answer the questions. Thank you, Madam Chair, for calling this meeting and for calling future meetings as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we're gonna go back to bi-weekly status update meetings, because I think it's important. One thing that I wanted to suggest, since we're on suggestions page before we get to Counselor Allen, is that you guys look at the application based on the need. Like, I, I, I'm just really, really bothered by the amount of awards that some organizations got. And I'm sure that they need it, but do they need it to the level of Yutrina, who is using her household income to pay rent somewhere so that, you know, she can keep a lease for an establishment? Do they, are they suffering as much as William Chapman, where that was his livelihood? That's his livelihood, and he couldn't open. But he got nothing still for months and months and months. So is there a category that says, who are the most disadvantaged population? And can we put them in an emergency category? They shouldn't be the ones at the bottom of the barrel. While I see organizations that I often see in the paper getting awarded grants, and I don't want to call them all out here. I hate that I use Big Y for an example, but I just went there today and they didn't look like they were struggling at all. And so it's just like, I know we got to do some economic development in the city of Springfield, but that's not wholeheartedly what this money was meant to do. It was most, it was meant to help the most disadvantaged folks. That is the reason why we got the funding in the first place, and those are the folks that's not getting it. That's not equitable and it's not fair. It's not fair. So if we can at all add a category to put folks that really need it in this like urgent box and really work to get them this funding, that would be really, really helpful. You know, even with Build Back Springfield program, these buildings have been dilapidated for years. No one's working in there. There, there, I mean, yeah, we want to fix them, but no one's suffering because these buildings aren't fixed with this historic tax credit. But you got folks that need money for their families and their kids that can't get a dollar. That makes no sense at all to me. That's just me. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I've been listening to the whole thing. I've heard pretty much everything. I'm wondering if we could just concentrate on the two people that are here. What would be the next steps with them? Because Mr. Chapman, it sounds like it's been a six-month process. Is there, and I'm sorry to get the other woman's name, but
Holly Hodges.
Katrina, thank you. It's been four months since March 1st or something. Is there, can we leave this meeting with an idea? And I know there's probably others who aren't in this meeting who might be.
Yeah, I got a list that I'm gonna send over. I got a list and I'll include
But for these two, but for these two, like, do you guys, when you evaluate something that comes in, do you have like a status that you put it in, like, are, you know, opened or being reviewed or that sort of thing? I guess that's my first question, Melanie. You know, once you, like, when Mr. Chapman's evaluation or application came in and it was read, does it go into a, you know, how does it move along through the process?
Sure, Counselor Allen. So unfortunately, I didn't receive an email ahead of time with Mr. Chapman and Ms. Holly Hodges' information. So I don't have any information regarding your businesses or applications at the moment. However, if you could please, Counselor Whitfield, send me their information. We'd be happy to provide them with a status update on their information, their applications.
Excuse me, Melanie, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Yutrina. Yes, you did. You sent me an email telling me that you had both of my applications in front of you and that you were gonna be getting back to me.
Okay, I think I remember that email. I sent it over to our ARPA staff team to respond. So let me check and see whether or not they responded back. So I apologize if there wasn't an immediate response on that. So with regards to your question, Counselor Allen, we do have a process. So right now, we have any application that we receive, we log it into our master spreadsheet. And so in that information includes all of their application information that they've submitted, as well as the status of their application. So if the intake is, whoever is receiving the application is doing the intake and they see that there is information that is missing, they then contact the individual application to advise them of what is missing. So again, if the information, the contact information is, you know, not, the email's not correctly typed out or it's not used as often, that can sometimes cause some delays in response, but that is the process that we have. We also have the arpa@springfieldcityhall.com email group where we recommend anybody. I know Tracy, you've been emailing me as well, Counselor Whitfield, they mean, on applications that you have questions on. And we're happy to provide a response on to the application.
So all I'm suggesting is that if something gets stuck for as long as it did, there should be some
We lost them.
I'm sorry, I think he fell off.
Yeah, we lost them. So I think what he was saying is, what are we gonna do for these two individuals that's here now? We could have had a lot more individuals on here, but I thought it would have took too long. So these were the two that I chose to give the link to, to join us. But each week, I'm gonna bring two more, because I really need you guys to hear how these people are struggling. I'm, I'm trying, I'm really trying, because we've been, we've been saying this since the beginning. And I'm really trying not to get the media involved and I'm trying not to go that route. And I'm trying to work with everybody at, on the city level, you know. But this is not a fair process. This is not an equitable process. And I don't even know if you guys look at equity when you look at these applications. But based on what I even seen on the list, I can tell you that the process is not fair and equitable as I see it. Even when the application first came out, it was very cumbersome. Even when the application first came out, it was very cumbersome and it has been changed. But for the folks that filled out the application prior to the application being changed, they weren't even notified of the changes. Like, there are just some really structural things that's going on that's really wrong, is really wrong. And the folks in the community that I live in, that I grew up in, are suffering a lot. So it's disheartening for me to see. I went to school with Eutrina. I've known her almost my whole life. And and I worked out at Will's establishment, had to stop working out, had to stop bringing my kids to karate with him. Like, he was a good foundation and a good structure for my family when the, when my kid's father moved out of here. He stepped into that role in a lot of situations with my children. And now he doesn't have the opportunity to do that for other families, but nobody sees this. Nobody hears these stories. But you can give money to organizations that are okay. I'm not going to say they don't need it. I'm going to say, but they're okay. These guys are not okay. And I got a list of families and organizations and small businesses and households and seniors that are not okay. So when are we going to put the focus there?
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield, and I can certainly empathize and understand the concerns. I apologize that I didn't include it on the report, but I will going forward. But the majority of all of the applications that have been awarded do fall within low-income standards and serve minority populations. So I do want to stress that, that that is what has been awarded. I understand the.
I want to hear black and brown. I don't, I, minority is so broad. Minority can include women and and Middle Eastern and Asian. And I'm talking about the folks that was disproportionately impacted by COVID, which the category, when I read it, said, black, Latino, it probably says low income. I don't know, but I want to hear about, I don't want, I don't want, I want to be very clear. That's, that's what I want. I want to be very clear on the population that I'm talking about. But I'm talking about households that organizations service that the information don't even get to some of these households on how to use the services and get the funding that they get from the city. So that, to me, is not helpful because their process is not equitable. But we can do something in the city of Springfield about the inequalities. I'm going to throw it out there, although I hate it. And the services and the processes not being equitable themselves. So I'm glad that they service these people, but they don't even sometimes get their information out to these populations. And I know that because people complain about that, too. Like, we're the front line, so we hear it all, right? But when you use those terminologies, this is the field that I work in. And I hear these struggling stories almost on a daily basis. And I want to change how we think about it. And I want to change it so that the folks that are disproportionately impacted are going to lose their homes, struggling to pay their bills, robbing Peter to pay Paul. Those are the focus points in my lens that we need to help. Those are the ones with the dire needs right now. But we, we, we always try to make excuses as to why we did this, that, and the third. There's no excuse for this. None. I'm sorry. If you had to hear it like I have to hear it, if you have people crying like I have people crying, then you will understand how I feel. But you probably don't get those stories because all you send is in the email saying, we received your application, but don't talk to the people. I'm sorry, Melanie, this is not all directed to you, but I am a little bit upset because of the level of folks that don't even, didn't even get a response, not one response. And it's not your fault because it was before your time.
Oh, we understand the frustration and I do take responsibility for the program. What I can say is we are working now to reach out to applicants. Like I said, we've already reached out to over half of the applications with a status update. With regards to following up on those, we are trying our best to follow up with the individuals that have not responded back. But again, we only have two staff members with over a thousand applications. So we are trying the best within the capacity that we have. To, with regards to reaching out to disproportionate populations, that is absolutely the goal of ARPA and that is absolutely the reason for the ARPA funds. And so we are actually trying to look into right now marketing methods for us to be able to provide outreach to those populations. So we are underway with that. So I want to let you know that we don't have anything just yet because again, I just started in May. But we are working on that right now so that we can ensure that communication is being provided to those populations who may not readily get information as you or I may and that they have available resources to go to to submit the application. So that's why, like I mentioned, I'm working with the senior centers to create locations and neighborhood councils. Actually, we are working, we just spoke with Councilor Gobon a couple of days ago as well. And we're trying to reach out to them individually so that we can not only provide them with the education, but a physical location for individuals to go to and have a person to talk to. So we are absolutely aware of this and are working on that.
Thank you. So I'm going to say my final thought and then I'm going to turn it over to Council Letterman for his final thought because I don't like to keep you guys past an hour. We're already at five o'clock. My final thought is, or question, I have about a list of twenty twenty-two applicants. I want to get them all in a room and I want them to get the assistance that they need right there in a room together at some type of location, just starting with these twenty that I have. Because it's the same people that keep reaching out to me that they still haven't heard anything. So to them, I'm probably not doing what I'm saying I'm going to do because they don't know what I'm doing. And so I would like to get them in a room, see if we have enough staff to help them understand where they're at and what what they need. Is that possible?
We can certainly, if you send me the list of the the individuals so we can look up their applications and see what the status is, we'll be happy to notify them of what is missing. And then if they request to have an in-person meeting, we'd be happy to.
I want an in-person meeting, Melanie. I want an in-person meeting. I want to be there. I want an in-person meeting. I want them at the table. I'm not, I don't want to send the email. I've sent emails and people still, I sent them before you came. I sent them while you there. People are still not getting what they need. I want an in-person meeting with the technical assistance folks with you, with finance, with these folks, so they can know that something is being done, people are listening to them. I want to know if we can make that happen. I want to know if we can all sit in a room together and make that happen.
We can certainly do that. I just don't want to waste the time of people when we need documents for them to come to a meeting to then not have those documents. So that's why I'm asking for us to have that ahead of time so that we give that information to them and then prepare so that when we do meet with them and get the information that they have what we need.
Sure. Now, that sounds good. I can get you those names. And if you provide them what they need, we could work together offline and schedule something that we can get everybody together and try to work this thing out. And we can do that a couple of times, try to work this thing out until we get applications pushed through. I'm willing to give up my time to do it. I hope that you, you guys are because this is what I'm voted in for. And a lot of times, the folks that need it the most are overlooked. But I don't want that to happen this time because as soon as we know it is going to be twenty twenty-four and then nothing's going to be available or the money is going to run out because we're giving a million dollars, two mil, two point five here for here organizations that, yeah, may service, but not the most distressed folks. So thank you for agreeing to that. I will get you the list and then we'll work offline and schedule a date. Council Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say in closing that, Melanie, the the language that you've used throughout the meeting relative to the size of your team leaves me with the impression that your department is understaffed. You know, I mean, I'm hesitant to see too much of this money spent on administrative purposes. But with that said, and I, and I, I recognize that that might be the goal of the administration is to make sure that as much of the money as possible is is not going into administration of the fund, but into actually getting the money out into the community. However, you know, you are administering what began as a hundred and twenty-six million dollar fund. And I mean, that is, you know, practically the size of some communities' whole budgets, right? So not ours, but but others, smaller ones. So, I mean, if the department is in need of more resources to adequately grant this money, I I don't think that we should under-invest in that because ultimately then our results are going to be underwhelming. So take that back, but but certainly if if the numbers are indicating that you need another analyst or that you need additional funds administered for technical assistance, I don't want that to be held back. That's just the impression I'm getting, sitting here, listening over the course of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman. And that's exactly, you, you hit exactly. That's, we were trying to be cautious because the program is being developed as regulations are being also distributed through the federal government. So we're literally creating it as we're managing it. And so we don't want to create positions without understanding the full scope of it. And so we want to be responsible because these funds are for the people and for the residents of the city of Springfield. So with that being said, that's why I want to touch again on what we were just discussing. That's why we're looking into options to outsourcing the intake process so that we can expedite the response time to businesses, households, whatever application category in which they apply for. So that is underway and we will provide you with status updates as soon as we get that developed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie, was your position, wasn't that transferred to regular budget, to general fund budget?
Was my position before from general fund? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, on general fund budget, no, not.
No, it's under, it's being paid under ARPA now because I'm a hundred percent ARPA.
Yep. All right. Well, if we don't have any more questions, Eutrina and William, thank you for joining us. What I'll do is when, you know, make sure your information gets to them and they can contact you. And then I'll work with the community to see what's the best date and time and location for us to meet, to have in-person meeting with the, with Melanie's team. And but I'll definitely keep you all on the loop. Okay. Thank you, Council Letterman, for your due diligence. Tim, thanks for joining. You ain't say much today, but thanks for always being available. Did you want to say anything?
I'm happy to listen and, you know, obviously, there's a significant room for improvement. And I think we're all up to the task of trying to make the processes more efficient than it has been to date and getting the assistance out there where it's needed.
All right, so thanks. Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.